Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Bearbo.
Present.
Friedleben, Paulson.
Here.
Landish is absent. Johnson?
Here.
Barnes-Elli.
Here.
Here. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, thank you. We'll move on to item 3.1. We have a proclamation to read this evening. It's a proclamation for Case Management Week, which actually was between October 13th and October 19th, 2019. We just received this a little bit late, but I'd like to read the proclamation anyway to recognize a Case Management Week, we as a city council. Whereas, case management is a multidisciplinary profession that seeks to assure the delivery of quality, appropriate, person-centered, efficient, and cost-effective healthcare services to patients throughout Minnesota. Case managers function in a variety of practice settings, including hospitals, home healthcare, area agencies on aging, long-term care, rehabilitation, elder care, managed care, and occupational health to facilitate the coordination of continuing care. And whereas case management is a primary medical management strategy that fosters the careful shepherding of healthcare dollars while maintaining a primary and consistent focus on patient advocacy. And whereas case management services enhance quality of life while promoting the achievement of positive healthcare outcomes. And whereas case management is an integral component of healthcare delivery in Minnesota and throughout the United States. Now therefore be it resolved, I Larry Cuffey Jr. and the City Council proclaim October 13th through October 19th, 2019 as Case Management Week in the City of Virginia. Given all this oath on October 22nd, October 2019. Thank you. Okay. Let's move to item four on the agenda, the public forum. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak before the council meeting this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to item five, which is the Consent Agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a citizen of Virginia or a city council requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval correction of the minutes of the regular meeting that were held on October 8th, 2019, and the public hearing held on October 8th, 2019. Our item Consent Agenda, item 5.2, adoption of Finance Resolution Number 19-020, the Schedule of Bills. Item 5.3, approve the travel request for Bill Henness, engineering, to attend the Institute of Building Officials, January 13th through the 17th in 2020 in Brooklyn Park, Minnesota, at a cost of $1,656.88. Item 5.4, approve the temporary liquor application for the Lyric Center on November 23rd, 2019. And finally, item 5.5, approve the 2:00 AM liquor license for K-Cor Incorporated Doing Business As Mel's Sports Page Bar and Snickers Pizza. Those are the Consent Agenda items on the schedule this evening. I would then ask the councilor to entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Counselor Paulson moves to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.6, appearances. We have no one scheduled to appear before the council this evening. So move on to item seven, unfinished business. Item 7.1 is the approval of the second reading of the Vacant Building Ordinance, Chapter 18 of the City Code. And I think we did get a an email that Pam sent out. Whether a citizen did have a question about the vacant building ordinance, was that, is that the one? Yes, so we'll be, apparently some of the councils were asked to respond. I've referred it over to our city administrator for that response. And I don't know how many, I think we all got the, received the email with respect to that. But this is the this is the second reading for approval of this vacant building ordinance. We did approve it the first reading, obviously. And so this is the second reading for approval. What is the council's pleasure? Counselor Freely.
Would this vacant building ordinance encompass both private and public buildings? We would be subject as a city those inspections as well and the potential costs that would be incurred for building. Do we own properties? We own as well?
Well, if we have, yeah, okay.
The vacant building ordinance doesn't have any inspections. It's just a vacant building registration. So they know that when the building's vacant, who to contact?
So that's essentially it. It's not necessary.
But we follow the city. If we-
Yeah, we have to follow whatever.
Whatever ordinance. So if we end up with a house, which happens with quite a few often, we have to have a house tax forfeit or something, we're trying to take it down, we would have to register that house, just like anybody else would.
And then there's fees incurred for this as well?
Yep. It's, the longer it's vacant, the more expensive it is.
Okay. And one of the questions that came to us was, where would these fees then go? Would they be put kind of in an escrow to assist in demolition and/or renovations? Or would they be put back into the general fund and used for other purposes? Do we know specifically where that money would go?
Would help offset blight, which most of these that are vacant, we already know of because we're taking care of their lawns, we're painting, we're picking up garbage, doing those kinds of things, and also for demolition costs.
And then the other concern was whether or not there's overlap, per se, with regard to this vacant building ordinance with the maintenance and preservation. Is there-
They work together because a lot of the time, if it's a, it's a house that we're not familiar with, we don't know who the property owner is. We're chasing our tail, trying to find these people while the grass still grows and the, you know, there's still garbage in the yard. But we can't find the person to contact them. We cannot enter their property until they've been notified that we're, you have a blight situation and you need to correct it.
So it's essentially to create an inventory of sorts-
Correct.
With contact lists and communication networking that we can-
Correct. So that we have both on the, the city side and the fire side, so that we know who owns the property. If there's an issue, who can we contact? How do we get ahold of you? And what's your intent? If you really want to demolish it or you want to let it go, then we know already, rather than waiting seven years before it dilaputates even longer.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Freely. Any other counselor? Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm looking for a clarification. Part of the question that was in the email that was addressed to a portion of the council was regarding the fees on the vacancies. And the way that I read it or that I understood it was the, the fee would only be assessed if the homeowner or building owner failed within the first through five years of registering vacancy in that building, not that they're being fined for an actual vacant property. Is that correct?
It's $50 to register a vacant house for the first year, a vacant property.
And then if it's, if it, if that same house or that same building is vacant the second year, it increases to 100?
$100, correct.
Okay, so, so the longer that that building stays vacant, the higher, the increase.
Correct. And everybody would-
Okay, so I misunderstood that.
Yeah, everybody would start at year one, January 1st. So we wouldn't, even if your property's been vacant for four years, we don't go back. We would, this would be the first year of vacancy.
So if there's being renovations, you know, being done to, say, a rental home or a building, and it's taking them two years to get it off the ground, they're still going to be assessed the first year 50 and the second year 100 because there's vacant, vacancy. Are there, are there any exceptions to that where if there's ongoing remodeling or ongoing construction, that those fees would be waived contingent upon
Yeah, there is.
Occupying occupation of-
Under subdivision six, there is a waiver that if the process, the party's in the process of demolition, rehabilitation, or other substantial repair, the fees are waived. So if they're working on it-
Okay.
It is, it is going to be waived.
So I think that was part of the question that was addressed in that email. And I think it's important that, that people understand it's based on the years of vacancy. And then that those dollars then are going to be set aside.
It would be lovely to be in a demolition fund because there, every demolition still has a little bit of cost above and beyond that the city is incurring. It's not a lot. You know, we get, we try to get as much grants as we can to minimize that, but there's always a little bit of cost. And like I said, and then the blight factor. We never collect 100% on our blight fees. We try. It just never happens.
I mean, I think the fee schedule is reasonable. If after five years, someone still hasn't been able to renovate or find a renter, it's probably going to end up being on a demolition property list. So I, I have no problem with that. But I just-
Thank you. I haven't seen the email, so I thank you for the questions. I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, I think that that was one of the main questions. Thank you.
Just, just one other item. If you, if you look at what some of the suburban Minneapolis cities are doing, their fees are like $1,000. I mean, I mean, $50 doesn't amount to anything. I mean, and the whole reason there's $1,000 to get somebody's attention, that maybe you want to do something with this house. Now, we may never get the $1,000, but I mean, that's kind of the idea, you know, really. I mean, we're really not trying to collect the money. We're, we're trying to get them either to, you know, fix it or tear it down and give them, you know, some reason to do it. So. And okay, thank you. I have a question. It just ended as an example that was, so say for, Brett, if you have some clarification or Tom, say if individual owns a building and this building is occupied, has an operating business going on, and was at one time renting a portion of that building, which is separate answerance, to, to, to that building that, that individual owned, but still operates a business on that building, but the second business is no longer there, no longer renting that, and it's empty, does that fall under the Vacant Building Ordinance Code? Is that's an exemption?
No, we can't do that because that would be the entire main street.
Well, that was- Am I wrong? I mean, really? No.
And that, that was the question. Thank you for the answer. And I hope you're listening. That you have, you have your answer now. So thank you very much. Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, thank you. Has there been a movement supported? Okay. So Counselor Bearbo.
Well, we can do the move and support.
Oh, go ahead.
My question is, Brett and Tom got a question on both of this. Once it gets to the fifth year, that's the time it's going to tax forfeit. So the $500 we'll probably never collect if they choose to do, do that. But can we lean that, on that property, so we can put on their taxes if they decide not to go tax forfeit? Okay, that was my question.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hey, I would look for a motion to move the second reading of the Vacant Building Ordinance. Is there a city council that willing to make that motion and move it forward? Or?
The second reading of the building ordinance.
Thank you. Move, moved by Counselor Johnson to move the reading, second reading, moving the ordinance forward for implementation based on the requirements of the law. Is there support for that?
I'll support for any further discussion.
Here's support by Counselor Bearbo for further discussion. Further discussion, Counselor Bearbo.
The one question I had, now I'm skipping my mind here. What did I have? Oh, after reading this, Brett, was there a specific in this ordinance that would go to, or is this just an administrative thing? It'll go to a dedicated fee, not dedicated fee, but dedicated line item on our budget?
I didn't direct or ask staff to consider creating a line item in the budget for it-
Okay.
2020, because this starts January 1st, 2020. So I have spoken with our finance office and explained to them that we need to be able to track this, what's coming in.
Yeah, we need to track it. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And just for everybody's interest, I did have the utilities run me a report of all the vacant properties that they know of, and there's 329.
Vacant properties?
That they know of, yes.
The problem you have is most of the people that have the vacant properties are not going to come in and pay the $50.
Most of them don't live in with a emergency.
But if we get some of them and we lean the property, I think we're working in the right direction, you know?
Like Tom mentioned, this is not a money-making thing. This is strictly an information-sharing venture that the city's working on between the fire and building official. And how do we get to these people that have vacant properties to maintain their property to a point that everybody is satisfied with the way it's looking?
Yeah. And I, and I think there, there, we're, as we move forward, adjustments have got to be made so that these individuals who have vacant properties, primarily rental properties, residential rental properties, that they are to try to get around the fee vacant, fee say, well, I am working on it. You know, I plan on making that into a family home or I'm remodeling now. But I think part of that, as we move forward, is to consider, well, if you're doing that, we have to have a plan and you have to actually have a building permit, and there has to be some activity moving forward, not just saying that. I plan on doing that in the future. I am trying to make it, yada, yada, yada. So that's all part of the exception policy on Section 6. Is that correct?
Thank you. Counselor Johnson.
Mayor, this just kind of popped into my head. We're talking, we're using property now, but the ordinance is building. Are we-
Building.
Are they interchangeable? Or if someone has a, a 100-foot lot that nothing's on it, and does that count also?
It is building, yes.
It's just the buildings. It's not, if we have, someone has a vacant lot. Okay. All right. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Paulson.
So just for further clarification, and when it states buildings, does it, is that meaning a building that has an actual address? So if someone, say someone's a landlord and they are renting the house on the lot, and they're also renting the garage, I would assume that that garage would have a specific address. Is that correct? So that would apply to all buildings that have a physical address in Virginia? And so those, if there are vacant garages that have been used as rentals and that do have an address, would those also fall under the registration of a vacant property?
Not that I would believe, no. Because similar-
Like if they, so if it has its own specific address and it's vacant, would that specific address be needing, needed to report that it's vacant if it's got a specific address, even if it's a garage?
If it's 329 and a half X Street, right?
Well, the way I look at it is this. Any building in the City of Virginia that is vacant is going to, should comply, even if it's kind of a lean-to, you know? I mean, it should comply. Because the, the object is to get a register and to make people clean their property up. So if it's in the city limits and it's empty, we'd like them to comply, you know? And, and I think most properties in towns have an address, even if it's just the garage, you know? They, they're still, what?
So is there anything that needs to be added to that? Because I feel like that might be a concern that in terms of blight with some of these garage properties that we have been dealing with, does, would that have to be added to this as a subsection? Or is it just going to be understood that it's a building with an address, no matter if it's a garage or a home or a building, as long as it has an address, it would be having to be considered vacant or habited?
Well, if you look under the definition section-
I was trying.
1802, "Building is any roof structure used or intended for supporting or shelter, any use or occupancy." I mean, it's pretty broad. I mean, it's any, any roofed structure. So if you don't have a roof, I guess you're okay. But-
So I just want it, for our purposes of what we're trying to do and what we're trying to accomplish to clean up, that would, this language is sufficient enough to give our building officials and the city the ability to move forward with assessing those fees on vacancies of any structure as stated in Section 18.02.
I mean, we could add, including freestanding garages too, you know? I mean, you know, properties that just have nothing in front but a garage and back, I suppose we could add that. I mean, there are a number of those in this, in this town.
And I think that, I think that's where I'm going with this. I, so we don't have people that say, hey, but then they're going to be assessed both fees if they're both vacant.
Yeah.
So I don't know how we'd want to address that. But I feel like it's going to be easier for our building official, because I'm assuming that's who's going to be assessing the fee if they find that it's a vacant property and it's not been reported. So that gives us greater ability to make sure that that structure is cleaned up properly or properly rented or whatever. So I, I'm comfortable with that as it states, as long as we are communicating to the public that that's what the intention is.
See, I don't think this 50 bucks is very harsh, to tell you the truth. I mean, you know, 50 bucks, I mean, you know, you look at some of the people in town, they'll let that go for five years. 250 bucks, you know? I mean, seriously. Then they'll come before us and ask it to be waived. Sorry about that, but.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Counselor Johnson.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Counselor Paulson, because my property that comes to my mind is the one on Fifth Street. And there are two property, there's two, our two buildings on that property. We have been addressing the front yard because that's where we can see the house. But that back garage apartment is in worse shape actually than the front. So that is definitely one of those places where I can see the landlord coming in and saying, I'm working on it, where he's doing something in the front and nothing in the back. So, so that's, I appreciate you bringing that up because I imagine that'll happen elsewhere in town as it comes forward. So I, I thank you for doing that, and I appreciate the staff that put some thought into that as well.
Thank you. And just a quick comment about that specific property referring to Counselor Johnson. Our code official and the fire department went over there and did a complete review of the inside and exterior of that building last week, or this, this past week or so. We'll stay tuned for some information about that. So is there anything else? Did you have something more, Counselor Bearbo, that you'd like to add before we go for a motion?
Just a quick question. Brett, I'm assuming that once we get this ordinance in place, they will have a computerized system so you can add and subtract. It's not going to be all manual, is it? It's going to be all computerized?
It'll be computerized.
Because I worry that that, if it isn't, it takes too much staff time to be keeping up with this every year. Because those things are going to change from year to year to year. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bearbo. Okay. Is there any further station or comments or questions or clarifications from the council? We will need a motion to move the second reading of the vacant ordinance forward. Is there someone willing to make that motion? We did? It was so long, I couldn't remember. Okay, it was moved and supported? And again, the 67-year-old mind isn't working very well. Okay, it moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. We'll move to item 7.2, is approve the second reading of the Fire Certificate of Occupancy Ordinance, Chapter 6, Section 6.46 of the City Code. And Brett, could you just get a, give a quick clarification of that for the council and for those who are listening at home?
Yep. Fire Certificate of Occupancy is actually for commercial businesses for the, where the fire marshal will actually come to your business and do a very simple checklist, which we will publish on the website so that you will know what it looks like when they come. It's not a full code review. It's just a simple, do you have a fire extinguisher in your building? Do you have clear exits? Are they labeled? Even with a sign that says exit, just very small things like that. Do you have carbon monoxide detectors? Do you have a smoke detector? It's not meant to be a very harsh restrictive inspection. And again, this is, we just talked about the vacant building ordinance deals a lot with residential. This would deal with the commercial side so that we know which businesses are in town, who is the responsible party, who can we contact if we have a question, and how do we get ahold of somebody?
Thank you. Counselor Freely.
So it's, it's not necessarily comprehensive in the fact that it would be a concern for like knob and tube wiring, for example, that was put in in 1890 or something. And then you come to the business, say you're going to have to rechain, you're going to have to change that out or any, I mean, those kinds of, that's some of the concerns in town right now with business owners, that they're going to have burdensome, cost-prohibitive expectations to meet a standard in town that is going to be stifling to business. And I just want to make sure that that's not the case.
That's not the intent, no.
These are more common, ordinary expectations that you have for safety purposes, for the public benefit and welfare.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Freely. Counselor Bearbo.
Mr. Freely, or Counselor Freely, most of those particular instances only happen if a building's been empty for over a year, and then somebody wants to buy it. Then we have to go to the state building codes, and then they require those things like knob and tube and some of those other things to be changed. But other than that, if you sell it a month from now, those all get grandfathered in because there's, it's still legal to do. Okay, so that should answer some of the questions.
Well, thank you, Counselor Bearbo. It's like the knob and tube we have in the fire hall, huh? Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Counselor Barneselli.
Mayor, I'll support that ordinance.
You're making a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion to support that ordinance. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Barneselli is moving the second reading of the Fire Certificate of Occupancy Ordinance, Chapter 6, Section 6.46 of the City Code. I'll move that forward, the second reading forward for approval. Is there support? Support by Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move to item eight, discussion items. Item 8.1, recommendation from planning and zoning. Approve the variance request for Joyce Mann for a one-foot variance to the maximum height of three feet allowed in the front yard in order to construct a new fence four feet high in the front yard.
I'll move the recommendation from planning and zoning.
Moved to approve the recommendation by planning and zoning by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
Full support.
Support by Counselor Freely. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Johnson.
I do have a question. In the minutes, it talks about how our, our ordinance has three feet, but most, everything is sold in four-foot sections. Is there a reason we use three-foot height in our ordinance?
No idea.
Okay.
But it's time for a change.
And I know planning and zoning's working on a lot of stuff right now, but I, I thought that was a very-
You're absolutely right. It becomes a burdensome hardship on people when they're trying to put up a fence that to order a special custom-sized three-foot is very difficult for some people. It's expensive.
I appreciate that. We've acknowledged that, and they'll be moving forward. I, I've always amazed at the, the house on the corner of Eighth Street and Third Avenue that is built to city ordinance with the one-foot sections and two-foot, four-foot. So that's good. Thank you.
Now, thank you, Counselor Johnson. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.2, approve or adopt a resolution to approve the Virginia Fire Department stuffed the ambulance toy drive on November 29th and 30th, 2019. This has become an annual event. A lot of police departments and other fire departments also participate in a toy drive for, for kids. So I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Also move, Mayor.
Moved by Counselor Bearbo. Is there support? Support by Counselor Barneselli. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.3 is adopt a resolution accepting a donation for the fire department, and the amount is $500. Thank you. Do we have to approve every one of these? You can't just have a blanket or, okay, I guess that would be right. So, okay. Looking for a motion to approve the acceptance of a $500 donation to the fire department. Moved by Counselor Barneselli. Is there support? Support by Counselor Freely. Is there any further- further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.4, we have four resolutions that we're looking for a motion to adopt. Adopt resolutions authorizing special assessments against properties for the following. Item 8.4, adopt a resolution for delinquent blight invoices. I think we need to do those separately. Yes, we do. Thank you, Councilor Bearbow.
Also move the special assessments for the delinquent property invoices.
Thank you. Moved by Councilor Bearbow. Is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Councilor Johnson for discussion. Further discussion, Councilor Johnson?
What is the $64,000 bill that's on that list?
Demolition.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Okay, any further discussion? Councilor Freedley?
When people are cited for blight, for example, and, so this means like they haven't paid, so we're going to be seeking those?
Correct.
Okay. And like, what's the extent of analysis, I guess? You know, do they have the, I mean, they have the opportunity to come and meet with the planning and zoning or to discuss further, like what progress they made or haven't made, or why they haven't or have?
Absolutely. And they get numerous notices that you have an outstanding invoice.
Okay. So there's a process in place for them to-
There is a process, and the majority of these, we just haven't heard anything from.
And so most of these delinquent ones are people that have just been negligent of attending to that. Most of the people that may have been cited do come forward and say, give me some extra time. I've done these kinds of things. I'm working on my own. So there is that process in place for them to-
It's not about making money. It's about compliance. So if they come forward and say, hey, I'm sorry, I was sick. Something's wrong with my mower. Give me a few more days. We are very, very willing to work with people. It's those that ignore us is the ones that end up on this list usually.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Freedley. It's moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.4B, adopt a resolution for delinquent public utilities.
Also move, Mayor, for the adoption of the delinquent public utilities.
Moved by Councilor Bearbow. Is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Councilor Johnson for discussion. Further discussion, Councilor Johnson?
My question is, when people come to us to have the other fees waived, the utility fees have already been waived by the utilities. Why do we not have to result, waive their utility fees also if we have to approve the fees being put on?
It's a lean on the, on their tax bill. That's why the city council has to do that.
But my question is, Councilor Bearbow, is by the time they get to us to waive other fees, these fees have already been waived by the Public Utilities Commissioner, the Public Utilities. And what my question is, is if we have to vote on these to approve them, should the council also be approving on them to forgive them when it's, when they ask for that?
Definitely. The utility has no authority to do it. They don't have any authority to waive it. Once it's put on the taxes as a delinquent utility today, they can't then come in and say, oh yeah, we forgave that, you know, or whatever, because it's out of their hands. They're sending it to us to put it on the taxes, right? So if it's going to be waived, they have to come back to us in order to get it off.
And that is not what has been happening since I've been sitting here.
Well, they've been telling us, and we've been just going along with it, but we haven't brought it, it hasn't been brought back to the council for official resolution to-
So none of those fees have technically been waived? I mean, I guess I'm trying to understand the process here. If we have to vote on, well, that list has got to be at least 30 or close to of doing these assessments, and then someone buys the property in five years, and they're coming to us to waive the blight fees, but we're being told that the other fees have already been waived, and nobody has the authority but us to waive those fees, I guess I'm concerned that there's a bunch of people out there thinking that they have utility fees that have been waived and they're not, or vice versa.
Okay. I think because it technically is, the utility's money, okay? So they have a bigger stake in this whole thing than we do because it's a utility fee. Our only stake in is, is, you know, the labor or whatever it takes for us to put it on the taxes. So I suppose if the utility says, okay, we'll forgive it, they're assuming that we'll forgive it since technically it's their money. I mean, right? I mean, it's a utility bill. It's not, it's, if the utility says no, we could still waive it if we wanted to, but usually we don't because the utility, it's, the utility's money, you know?
I guess I'd just like to make sure that we're following the same procedure, that if we need to prove it being put on, that I think we should be approving it to be taken off to, to make that circle final instead of, you know, and if that's something that staff need to figure out and come back with, I would appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Johnson. Okay, it's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Barnzelli?
Thank you, Mayor. Several years ago, we were all here, I don't know if Mr. Freedley, Councilor Freedley was, but an individual from Duluth came up. He wanted to do a tattoo building on the 400 block, the old dance studio. And the utilities wanted $8,500 or they wouldn't, we couldn't sell that or give that. Or that guy, he had to go up to the plaza and he rented a building up there by the old, I don't know what that, what was it?
The old Dave's Pizza building.
Up on, up in the plaza.
Right.
Yeah. So my point is, it seems like the utilities can, they wouldn't let that property be sold until they got their $8,500. But now, it's a different story? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think Councilor Johnson, I'm putting words in your mouth. I just think you want to just know, you know, if in fact, we're going to put it on their taxes. We'd kind of like to know if you're going to forgive it, you know? So, I mean, that's all we're really asking for, right? It's their money. I mean, we'll probably go along with a forgiveness, but if they won't, I mean, we could override them, I suppose, but we usually don't.
If I might, Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Johnson?
That's the whole idea, is that, does the utility have the authority to forgive something that's been put, special assessments? Do they have the authority in the city of Virginia to forgive special assessments? So then we, as a council, need to forgive all of those special assessments. They can, they can recommend to us and say they have, and then it needs to come to us, and we say, yes, we agree, which I'm sure we probably would, because we want people to occupy buildings. So my-
Many times.
You know, I want to make sure that if that's what needs to be happening, that we are, they are following that procedure. And, because my concern would be is that there's a special assessment on a property, and have they been removed over the last, I'll just say, three years since I've been here? Or are they still on, on assessment somewhere, and these folks are still paying for something that's been forgiven by the utilities, but not by the city?
Let me try to clarify very simply. Okay, sitting in at these utility meetings, Steve, if they forgive a assessment, not an assessment, but a bill on a property, it's done before they ever sent it to us as an assessment. And they're autonomous commission, so I believe they can do that. Yeah, and that's what they've been doing as far as I know from what I've seen. They may have a special circumstance where they'll forgive somebody's before. Once it gets to this point, you're absolutely right. They cannot forgive those. Once it gets to the leaning process on their taxes, we have to do that. You're absolutely correct.
Does that answer your question, Councilor Johnson?
I understand, but I'm not quite sure that we're servicing our, the people who have asked for these forgiveness. I guess I would want to make sure that they've actually, it's been taken off if they think it has been. I guess that's where I'm at, is making sure.
Yeah, well, first of all, we have to certify it in terms, and that's why we put it on the assessment, right? I don't see the utility forgiving many of these. So I, maybe they do, but I haven't seen them. I haven't had any, I don't know. I mean, I'm sure there's some out there, but I haven't seen them forgive much. And Councilor Bearbow is probably right. Before they come to our certification, a lot of times they'll do the forgiveness, I guess. I don't even know if that, how true that is, but.
I have not seen very many in the time I've been liaison where they actually do that, Steve, ahead of time. But once they get here, you are correct, and we lean the taxes, we have to be the forgiving party. You're right on that.
Okay, okay. So, Councilor Paulson?
Thank you. Well, I guess I would agree with Councilor Johnson. It is a little confusing, and I will kind of state why it is confusing to me. The last recollection I had was a property on Second Avenue where a gentleman came and said those, that was already forgiven. So, so are these two different things we're talking about here? Is it an assessment, and then there's something else that was, they could have been forgiven?
Maybe blight.
No, it was a utilities, it was something with the utilities, and then they were coming, it was both. There were two things he came forward with. So I just, I mean, if there's a procedure that we should be following differently, if people need to be coming to the city to, to ask for that forgiveness, and then we approve it at the council level, and then the utilities gets their money, maybe that's the way it needs to go? I'm just saying, the last, I think there was one or two properties since I've been here that did come before us and say that the utilities did waive those fees, and I didn't know if that, I don't remember if it was a tax assessment, or there was some other type of fee, but I think the one on Second Avenue was an actual tax assessment that was waived prior to him coming here, and he stated-
Utility bill. Utility bill.
And they can do that.
So just a bill, not a tax assessment? That's my question. Are we, are we missing-
Well, it's a bill, but then they come to us to certify it on their taxes once it's delinquent. Once they do that, okay?
Our property, yeah.
It's our, it's our issue. I mean, if they recommend they want to forgive, and it's their money, we usually forgive it. But they do come to us when, when in fact, they want it taken off their taxes, because the utility can't do it.
I think what Councilor Johnson's alluding to is that the city needs to talk to the utility to ensure our process is correct.
Yeah.
And that they understand that if it's on the assessment rolls, they have to ask us permission to remove it from the assessment roll. If it's just a utility bill that's passed through, that they certainly can waive it before it goes to assessment. And we will clarify that procedure with our staff and with their staff. Just make sure all of everybody knows and is well aware of how this has to go.
And I think that's where I was going with-
Thank you. That's exactly what I'm looking for. Thank you, Britt.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilor Johnson? Councilor Paulson? Anyone else? Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.4C, adopt a resolution for violation of the Clean Water Discharge Ordinance. We've had a couple of them over, over time, particularly one, I think, in the industrial park. But, yeah. They're the same properties that we've had issues with in the past, so.
Basically, they're chemical things they're putting down in the sewers, correct, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And maybe Tom is right. Maybe our fees aren't high enough on those because they keep violating, and it's the same individuals that keep violating at times.
Well, you know, as we look at, as we look at these things, you know, we want to keep businesses in the community, no question about that. We want everybody to comply, obviously, with the, with the discharge, whether it's whatever the case, but this particular discharge of these chemicals, because they get into our water sewer treatment plant, and they create havoc with our equipment, and, you know, the divergent pump and all those kind of things. It creates a big issue, and it's also toxic material. And we, as the city of Virginia, are one of the only ones in the area, or the only one in the area, that's permitted this, at least one specific business to operate when they clean their tanks out. So, I mean, they can't get the permit in other communities, but we have that. So maybe it's time for us to take a look at review of that permit to allow them to continue if this kind of violation is consistently moving forward. So, I mean, as our city attorney alluded to, maybe, maybe the fee has to be a lot larger, the fine has to be a lot bigger. But, so do you have anything else you'd like to add to that, to Tom or Britt? Okay, thank you. Councilor Johnson?
Is this a one-time fee that we're assessing, or is this?
An annual fee.
Annual fee.
Actually, this is the some pump ordinance.
Okay.
Which is kind of a funny story. When I started here, this was my job. I started as an intern with the city of Virginia in 1999, was to ensure some pump compliance. So these are the six properties that have not come into compliance with the city's some pump ordinance.
Well, these are the some pump violations.
It's cheaper for them to pay $650 a year than it is to, I'm guessing, fix the problem.
This is approximately 19 years of fines.
Yeah, I don't really know who these properties are.
I guess I would, I would move-
They need to comply.
Move the resolution, but then I would ask staff to, as we're moving forward with ordinances, evaluate the effectiveness, especially when it has, it could be damaging to the environment and citizens.
Okay, you're making a motion to move that forward? Motion by Councilor Johnson to move the ordinances by resolution. Is there support? Is there support? Is there support? Motion fails. Okay, thank you. Well?
Don't we want our 650 bucks?
We do, but there's no second.
And we can change it after that.
Uh, Councilor Paulson?
I would like to make a motion, if it's allowed at this point, to table this for further discussion. I just feel like I don't have enough information since this wasn't brought before the committee of the whole. I would like to, you know, maybe have, is it Bill Hennis, or is it Bill Cole?
We the sewer crew?
Oh, it's our sewer crew.
They probably don't know this either, so we'll have to bring in some other staff that was involved with inspections.
I just, I think for the edification of what this is and what's, what is the whole ordinance, the whole ordinance isn't listed here. So I have a hard time adopting a resolution when I, I guess I don't really feel like I have enough information to make that decision properly.
And before we make that motion, I'd like to make a comment. You know, this is a some pump ordinance which has been in effect for-
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
Nine, yep.
And, and most everybody complies. But these six properties have not complied. So the purpose of this motion is to collect money, assess them, to make sure they comply, right?
And certify.
We have to certify that, right? So, okay, so, go ahead.
And I understand, and I just don't have enough information, I think, in our packet to make me say, okay.
So you're making a motion, uh-
Table it and tell them, and bring it forward to the next committee of the whole where we can maybe have further explanation, if that would be a possibility.
Okay, motion by Councilor Paulson to table, item 8.4C for additional discussion, and move that over to our, to the next committee of the whole meeting, supported by Councilor Freedley. Is there any further discussion? We can't have any discussion on tables, I apologize. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Item 8.4D, adopt a resolution for the loan interest loan.
If I may explain a little more.
Please do.
This is the special assessments for those properties that took out a low-interest loan for conversion but did not make any payments.
They took, to convert from steam to gas. They took out the low-interest loan in order to accomplish, you know, the goals and objectives of the ordinance requiring mandatory conversion. They have made a payment, so we're now, uh-
Or they've chosen to put it on their taxes. Another option, when you took out the loan?
Yeah.
You could choose it to put on your, on your taxes.
Right, so, right, okay, thank you. Thank you, Britt. Okay. Councilor Johnson?
I appreciate that last clarification that they had chosen. I would be more comfortable if the resolution was clear about that this is a choice that these, these taxpayers made as opposed to, because the way I read this is that these were one of the first people to do their conversion. They haven't made any payments, and so now it's a, it's a negative thing.
And it may, these may be conversions from 2009, 2010, so we should probably table for more information.
I would, I think that's what we need to do. I, I would, I, I think that's what we need to do because if we need to, if it's a positive thing, then.
Are they?
Yeah. Current conversions.
I would move to table this to the next committee of the whole meeting for, um, for more questions and more information. This is one of those things that was a concern when we started this discussion three years ago about what's going to happen when people do their conversion and then they don't. Um, and, and I think we need to have some clarification exactly why these are coming to us.
Well, I, it's already, I can't say anything. Who's motion to table? Motion by Councilor Johnson to table. Is there support for the tabling motion on this, on item 8.4D regarding the resolution for the loan interest loan payments related to the conversions? Is there support for that? Support by Council Freeleeb. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. And part of the motion is to move that to the next committee of the whole meeting, uh, Councilor Johnson. Thank you. Okay. Item 8.5, approve the parade route for the Festival of Trees on November 3rd, 2019.
That should actually be November 23rd.
I'm sorry about that.
No, that's okay. The agenda.
Let me write it down, the 23rd.
23rd.
Okay. Approve the parade route for the Festival of Trees on November 23rd, 2019.
It's a short parade route. We start at the east end of Chestnut Street and go to Fifth Avenue. That's it. Just a short little parade.
Santa won't have to walk as far. Okay. All right. Thank you. Do I have a motion here?
I'll move to approve.
Uh, Councilor Paulson moves to approve and support by Councilor Baraboo. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.6, adopt a resolution approving, entering into an energy services agreement between the City of Virginia and Amoresco Incorporated for Project A contingent upon approval of financing. Are we making, uh, are we looking at, uh? Well, never mind. That's coming under committee reports. Okay. Um, all right. Councilor Johnson?
We have some more information. It, it, this is 8.6, the properties listed. That's what they'll be working on?
The resolution that Pam handed out today is, should be a packet of resolutions. It does list in there, Project A is the first project and that shall include the LED street lighting, building envelope, mechanical insulation, HVAC upgrades and automation system upgrades and solar project.
Okay. I was looking for it and couldn't find it, so, um.
Fortunately, I did not get this till yesterday, so I didn't get a chance to, um, get it out.
And everything is with the, um, utility is as close as we're going to get right now?
At this moment, yes. So, I would ask if we do adopt the resolution that we do a contingent upon approval of financing.
Okay. I will so move contingent upon financing.
Okay. Motion by Councilor Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Freeleeb. Okay. The motion and support is to adopt a resolution approving, entering into an energy service agreement between the City of Virginia and Amoresco Incorporated for Project A contingent upon approval of financing. It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.7, adopt a resolution approving, entering into an energy service agreement between the City of Virginia and Amoresco Incorporated for Project B contingent upon approval of financing.
Project B is city facilities indoor LED lighting only.
City of Virginia?
City facilities.
City facilities indoor lighting only?
Indoor lighting only.
Okay.
That would be numerous buildings that are listed in the schedule. City Hall.
And again, uh, contingent on approval of financing.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
I will move, um, approving, entering into energy service agreement between the City of Virginia, Amoresco for Project B contingent upon, um, financing also.
A move by Councilor Johnson, is there support?
I would support, but for discussion.
Support by Council Freeleeb for the discussion. Further discussion, Council Freeleeb?
So, I'm on the, understanding that, like, the costs that we would be incurring would be absorbed by the savings we will see by this project being initiated.
Correct.
Okay. And then the funding is?
However, there's a small portion that the city did agree to do the extra $225,000 above and beyond what the savings were.
And are we seeking grants for that or is there any other, or?
Nope. Sherry is very confident that we will save, it's the, what we were, what we are going to save with the decreased manpower of what our staff is already working with will help fund that portion because.
All of the costs we incur are kind of inherent in the project itself.
Exactly. Exactly.
Uh, thank you. Any further discussion? Uh, Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I did, I, I drove through, um, Midway today and noticed the lights at the skating shacks. Are those lights all included in this, the, the skating rinks and?
I do believe so because we, we discussed Mill Forty at quite a long length and we excluded Mill Forty. So, I do believe that they are, but I will verify that.
Would you please? Because I, I think that could be beneficial, especially up in Midway with they have, still have the big sodium lights up there, so.
The instant on of LED is a very attractive thing.
Yes.
Whereas the sodium take a long time to get to the right temperature.
Especially at 20 below zero. All right. Thank you, Britt.
And I do recall, Councilor Johnson, the discussion with Amoresco because they live up Midway and had some questions at that, uh, coffee and conversation at the park about that. And when I asked Amoresco, they said they, in their website, they have a list of all the lighting that's going to be done and Midway was included in that, that, uh, that the reason Mill Forty was excluded because it's owned by the, the school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, great point. Okay. Uh, it's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Council, uh, Baraboo?
So, what I'm seeing here, Britt, and, and there's big attachments are received for all these other things, is this not included? Why is it even listed to us then? Well, look at, look at 8.7. The Project B. It says Attachment B. Isn't that Project B? Or is this a? That's 8.7 is A.
It's all of that. 8.7 and then 8.6.
Six.
Six. Both have A, B, and C that are in your packet.
Okay. So, so those big long lists are things you're going to do too, then?
Yep.
Okay. Then I'm satisfied.
Yep.
Okay. I just had the wrong number there. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Councilor Baraboo. Okay. Moved and supported. Uh, item 8.7, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.8, adopt a resolution of approving the hire of permanent part-time parking monitor. Britt?
Thank you. We conducted interviews on Friday, the 18th of, we had 13 applicants, but one chose to back out, so we conducted 12 interviews. And we have to bring you forward now the approval, the recommendation to approve hiring the part-time parking monitor for the City of Virginia and we recommend Daniel Wolf contingent upon, of course, background check and physical.
And there is a resolution in your packet?
In the packet that Pam gave out today.
Whereas the City of Virginia and the American Federation of State and County Employees, AFL-CIO, have agreed that there is a part-time parking monitor position available in the police department. The position is covered under an agreement between the City of Virginia and AFSMI, AFL-CIO, Local 454. And a review committee has reviewed the potential applicants and whereas it's being proffered that Mr. Daniel Wolf has successfully completed a pre-employment physical and occupational therapy assessment and background check. And there's a motion and recommended by staff to approve this hire of Mr. Daniel Wolf for this position.
I'll move the hiring of the, um, I will move the resolution approving the part-time hiring monitor of Daniel Wolf.
Okay. Thank you. Move by Councilor Johnson, is there support? Support by Councilor Baraboo, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Yeah. Item 8.9, adopt a resolution approving the hire of seasonal recreational assistants. And there is a, um, uh, resolution in your packet. Whereas Park and Recreation Department has expressed the need to hire personnel to act as monitors at the outdoor rinks and operate concession stands, uh, in our facilities. Whereas these positions are seasonal in nature and any person hired under this position of recreation assistant shall not work more than 66 shifts. And whereas the applicants have been reviewed by human resources staff for this position and whereas is recommended to hire the following for the 2019, 2020 winter ice season, Mr. Tim Martinson, Avery Delensick, Jacob Konecki, Joy Labine, Tucker Johnson, and Tristan Wyman.
I will move the resolution approving the hiring of the recreational assistant positions for the City of Virginia.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Moves the resolution forward for the hire of the seasonal assistants. Is there support?
Support. And just a quick discussion, these have all been interviewed?
Excuse me? Sorry.
These have all been interviewed?
They have. Yesterday.
And that was by Brian and yourself?
Brian and myself, yes. Because Sherry is on vacation. And I do want to point out, we still need more. We, Brian's ideal number would be eight, so we are still taking applications for this position.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Freeleeb. Moved and supported. Uh, Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, what is the screening or the hiring process and are there background checks that are done on these kinds of?
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
And because there, a couple of them are under 18, we have to have their parents consent to the background, but yes, we do have a screening process.
Okay. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all, uh, Council Brunzelli?
Thank you, Mayor. Britt, the, the skating shack, are those the three that are on the left? They were there last year?
They are coming back for another season.
This is their third year.
This is their third year. Yep.
And what will the other three do?
All of them are going to be, all of them except for one are going to be working at the skating shacks and also at the minors for the concession stands. We're getting the concession stands back this year.
They're going to take over that concession.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
And I think the reasons the need for eight is because there's a maximum 66 shifts that can be, and they can work, so, in the season. Okay. Thank you. Moved and supported again. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I just point out that if anybody's interested in applying for the job, visit our website at virginiamn.us. And we, our application's on there.
Still taking applications.
Still taking applications. Thank you.
And, uh, maybe we could give a plug to, uh, the wage?
It's $13.54 an hour.
$13.54 an hour.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. We'll move to item nine, committee reports. Item 9.1, the committee of the whole meeting that was held on October 15th, 2019. Turn this portion of the city council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Benis. Britt?
Thank you. At the committee of the whole meeting on October 1st, I'm sorry, October, what date was that? October 15th, 2019. We had a presentation from Mrs. Brenda Pelan, Brenda Schaper Pelan, from ARDC regarding the Arrowhead Agency on Aging. It was a very informative presentation about all the work that they do in the community. It was very appreciative. We also discussed the recommendation from VEDA to award, VEDA, I'm sorry, VEDA, to award the contract to the Downtown Grant Administrator to CRD LLC. It was moved and supported to table that awarding to the next committee of the whole meeting. And I have heard that staff from the CRD will be at the November 5th City Committee of the Whole Meeting to discuss their proposal. This, the council discussed the monthly IT managed service agreement versus hiring an IT director. It was moved and supported to continue with the monthly managed IT services for the City of Virginia. And just a side note, we will be bringing that back to the November 5th Committee of the Whole Meeting as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt Reed of S E H, our record, our engineer of record, gave a review of the proposed zoning and planning ordinance proposal provided by S E H. The proposal is for, I believe they call it Task One of the ordinance update and is expected to take three to four months to complete. It was moved and supported to authorize city staff and S E H to begin Task One of the planning and zoning ordinance update.
Looking for a motion from the council. Councilor Baraboo?
Also move the motion.
Uh, council moves a motion forward. Is there support? Support by Councilor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Councilor Baraboo gave an update from the Street and Alley Committee meeting that was held on October 10th, 2019. Street and Alley Committee is reviewing the list of proposed streets to be upgraded and pri, would asking the council to help prioritize for the next committee of the whole meeting on November 5th. Discussion was also held regarding the resident parking only signage on 17th Street South, which is near Super 1 South. It was moved and supported to send a letter to residents regarding the resident parking only signage on 17th Street South and to discuss removal of these signs. This meeting will be held November 5th, 2019 at 9:00 a.m.
Also move the motion.
Motion by Councilor Baraboo, is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Councilor Brunzelli. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
City council was informed that the tax forfeited property located at 219 Chestnut Street, which is a vacant lot, has now gone tax forfeit and is available for the city to purchase for public purpose. It was moved and supported to authorize the purchase of the vacant lot located at 219 Chestnut Street from St. Louis County in an amount not to exceed $500, and there is a resolution in your packet.
I'll move the resolution.
Moved forward the resolution for the purchase of this parcel by Counselor Paulson, is there support? Support by Counselor Freedleeb. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Excuse me, it was moved and supported to table the discussion on the federal OPA litigation lawsuit involving cities until more information is gathered from the city attorney, and I trust that Tom will speak at it at the November 5 meeting.
We can discuss it already now if you want, but...
It's not in the packet, so we can, we can do it November 5. But thank you, though.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
And then it was moved and supported to authorize staff to proceed with the repair of the police garage roof and to determine who was responsible for the cost of the incident. The incident occurred on September 30 when we had a large rainstorm. We had a large rainstorm in our garage into our basement.
I will move that we authorize staff to proceed with the repair and the determination accordingly.
Move by Counselor Johnson, is there support for that? Support by Counselor Freedleeb. Further discussion, Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So if you actually read item G, authorize staff to proceed with the repair of the police garage roof and determine who is responsible for the cost of the incident, and I actually thought at our last meeting, we already, the county was already being responsible, or the contractor was being responsible, so I'm a little uncomfortable with the wording on that. We are not, the city is not responsible, though, are they? Are we still really trying to determine that?
Our insurance company is handling this matter. So I don't know that I want to state at this moment that we have any fault or that anybody else has any fault.
Okay.
At this moment, but we are working actively on it. We've had an electrician come take a look at the electrical to ensure that it was, that it's in good working order. We've had somebody come look at the garage door openers to ensure they're in good working order, so there's a lot of things that we're having contractors to take a look at.
And you know what, there's a lot going on at the staff level, and I really appreciate all the work that you guys are doing. I guess I'm thinking back to the original, when the county was here and they, they did discuss the Sallyport and any damage that was done to that. Was that ever written in that contract? So I will assume that that's being handled, the proper channel. I just was concerned about the way that was worded in our packet.
Yeah, we're not going to pay for it, but we want to get it fixed, so we mitigate the damages, basically. So, you know, I mean, we could argue about it for a while, but we get it fixed, so, you know, it's, winter's coming, and, you know, the insurance companies usually argue about who's not going to pay.
Right.
But we're not going to pay.
And the contractors have been great. They really have.
Okay.
They've been really wonderful, come forward to help how they can.
I appreciate that clarification going forward.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Has there been a temporary fix? It's been...
Yes.
Rained a lot in the last couple days, so...
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries, thank you.
And that is all I have from that meeting.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Britt. We'll move to commission liaison and department head reports. Does any counselor have a report they'd like to give before the council today? Counselor Johnson?
Just would like to bring up that there has been numerous concerns about the demolition over the last week, and the city staff have been more than diligent about contacting the county and the contractors, and so I really want the public to know that, that the city is doing their best to keep things under control and to bring forward the concerns that are being had with the demolition, and appreciate their extra, I came in Monday morning, and Britt had already done her first of multiple emails, so thank you for doing that and for handling it very tactfully. Appreciate it, and it looks like we've got one section of roof left out. They were doing a little work earlier today while the council meeting was going on. It's quiet now, but I'm guessing the majority of the tall work will be done relatively soon, and then it'll just be cleanup after that.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Anyone else? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I attended the Cable Commission meeting, and just part of the discussion that they're, they're working out still some of the bugs with our live streaming and some of our audio issues, and then part of the other discussion was maybe discussing with DSGW or Eric Wedge some of their space needs for filming at the new minors complex, so that, that was just some of the things that were discussed, and there's positive things coming forward as, as that project is moving forward, so I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Paulson. We'll go to department heads. Once again, we'll ask Britt, anything else you want to add? Tom, anything? Pam?
Thank you. I just have two items. First, I have the opportunity or pleasure of attending the, I was the only city representative that was able to attend the census meeting, and so to spare you all the deluge of information that I received, I have packets for everybody to take a look at, at your leisure, so I'll make sure that those get distributed to you, so, thank you. Okay, this is exciting. You know, we're working on a, you know, it is a city council, and we work on a lot of things. We've been working as a team with our staff in order to do really good things for the City of Virginia. You know, we hear a lot of the concerns that people have, why aren't you doing this, or why aren't you doing that, and we are really making our best effort to make this a group, great place for, to, to work and to live, and to improve our community in a variety of ways, and we're, we're doing that. Here's another opportunity, and this is part of the downtown revitalization thing, Virginia Downtown Business District business owners, now we are going to be known, this business district, we're looking for, we're going to have a meeting, Britt has set this up, and this notice is going out to all businesses in the downtown area, which includes Chestnut Street from Rarewood Avenue to Silver Lake, First Street North from Rarewood Avenue to Silver Lake, and First Street South from Rarewood Avenue to Silver Lake. The City of Virginia and the City of Virginia Economic Development Authority, along with staff in the Revive Virginia, are pleased to announce the rollout of the Virginia Downtown Redevelopment District Commercial Rehabilitation Program. An economically strong and vibrant downtown business district is vital to the local community and its economy, especially in the downtown. Such as the City of Virginia Downtown Business District, reinvestment in Virginia's downtown business district assures that the physical assets and infrastructure of the business district in this community is improved and maintained. The Downtown Redevelopment District Commercial Rehabilitation Program addresses the needs for investing in our downtown as a top community priority. Virginia city officials, we have all addressed this responsibility by securing affordable financing for downtown business owners through a variety of local, regional, and state agencies. As a result of these partnerships, and thank you, Britt, for facilitating this and moving forward and keeping your thumb on the pulse of what's going on and going through all these meetings, the city is able to offer grants in the form of forgivable loans, up to $50,000 to business owners wishing to reinvest in the physical assets of their business property. Favorable loan resources have also been secured to provide additional affordable financing to leverage your grant funding. Some of the work items eligible for funds include repairs to or replacement of deteriorating exterior features such as windows, doors, roofs, and siding. Additionally, business owners can use these funds to make energy improvements, interior renovations, and improvements to correct building code violations. There's going to be a kickoff meeting for all those who want to attend, and every single business owner in the downtown is going to get a copy of this. The city administrator and staff are going to make sure that every business owner has this opportunity to attend, and there's going to be a kickoff meeting on Monday, November 4th, at the Virginia Alps Club. That's Monday, November 4th, at Virginia Alps Club. Begins at 5:30, social hour begins at 5:30, and the informational program will begin at 6 o'clock. Again, that's November 4th on Monday, November 4th at the Alps Club, 5:30, 6 o'clock for the program, and the Virginia Downtown Redevelopment District Commercial Rehabilitation Program information packets and applications will be available at this event to any businesses, any business owner who is interested in participating in this new program. For information about this program to kick off, you can contact our city administrator, Britt C. Bennis, at 218-748-7500, 218-748-7500. And I want to say, Britt, this is really a, a great program, and really, this is a pilot project that's been, been sponsored by the IRRB. Virginia is the pilot program for this, so we want this to be a successful event. This is for the purpose of our downtown revitalization. I think every single counselor on this, that's on this council and previous councils, and our staff, as, you know, this is a really top priority, the community is, this is a top priority. Here's an opportunity, one of many that we've been able to occur in this area. We've got pocket parks coming in, so there's a lot of other things. It just adds to our ability to improve the downtown. So please take advantage of it. Once again, it's on Monday, November 4, 2019, at the Alps Club, 5:30, social hour, and 6 o'clock would be the program. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact our city administrator, once again, Britt C. Bennis, at 218-748-7500. So, Britt, would you like to add anything to this? This is really exciting for all of us. Thank you. All right. Okay, anything else? Counselor Barnzelli, you have a report you'd like to give?
Yes, Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm, parking rec met last Wednesday, the 16th. Have a couple of things. Both skating, we have ice in the back rink now, and we have ice in the main arena. Figure skating, I think, started on Monday, yesterday. And up at the greenhouse, we have the north, our north building, the glass roof, and then the south building. The last winter, they covered that window with a canvas, a big tarp, and it saved them oodles of money. So this year, they've got a new tarp for the south room and the main, the main corridor that goes east-west. So we're looking forward to doing that, and it's saving us tons of steam. So we're looking forward to that, and everybody's all excited about the hockey now, their skating, figure skating has started, and we have a new figure skating teacher, the girl that was there for, I don't know, 25, 30 years, she retired. I don't remember her name, but...
Barb McKee.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you. So that's all I've got to say about our parking rec. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Okay, anything else that anybody would like to bring up on the council before we adjourn for this evening? Seeing none, thank you, everybody, for listening. Members, take advantage of the downtown busy grant program. Have a safe week. We will adjourn to the next committee, the whole meeting will be November the 5th, but our next council meeting will be Tuesday, November 12th, at 5:30 p.m. So everybody have a great week. Thanks for listening. We stand adjourned.